I'd like to call and order the regular planning meeting for August the 12th, 2024. Mr. Dug, could we have a roll call?
Yes, Mr. Vice Chairman. Commissioner Pitts?
Yes, sir.
Chair McKinley, let the record show she is absent. Commissioner Hilton?
Here.
Vice Chair Dawson?
Here.
Commissioner Fallon?
Here.
You have quorum, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, sir. First item on the number two is adopt the minutes from July. Have you had a chance to review the minutes? Can I get a motion second to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
So thank you. And we have no oil business, so we'll go to item four, new business. Application for special exception, SPX 2024 dash slash zero four, MKLJ Holdings LLC. Per the email today, Matt Smith has requested an extent, a postponement, postponement to September. According to procedure, we have three options. We can deny the postponement and hold a hearing. We can open the hearing and take some testimony and then continue the public hearing to September. Or we can just postpone the public hearing to September without discussion upon request. As Chair, I would, since we have some people here to speak, I would suggest that we open a public hearing and hear testimony and then move to next month to get more information from Matt to have a...
I'm good with that.
Most of the postponement.
Yes.
Most of the postponement.
To hear the public, open the public hearing to hear, hear the people that have come.
Yes.
Okay?
Yes.
And keep the public hearing.
And we'll keep the public hearing and open it next month.
Aye.
Okay?
Yes.
Okay?
I'll make that motion.
Okay?
I'll second.
Okay. We'll open the public hearing and first on the issue, on the list is Eddie Cochran. Oh, that's, that's, that's the wrong...
Yeah, this is for the mini warehouses on...
All right, that threw me, because Jeremy, you don't, you signed the wrong list. You wanted to be the one for Matt's, right? Okay, so he's on this list. All right. So Jeremy, if you come up, Mr. Hawkins, excuse me. Yeah. State your name and address and...
Sure, where's the X? So, good evening, my name's Jeremy Hawkins. I live at 2775 Old Alabama Road. So as you head at 74 West and take a left on Old Alabama, I'm the first driveway on your left, right across from this proposed site. So anyway, this is a maiden voyage for me when it comes to speaking to a planning group. I see your sign, City of Thompson, this is Homewell, so is all of Upson County. It's a beautiful place and all I'm here to do is express a concern for these particular units going in that spot when you can ride right back up the hill. I'm not going to pretend to have the exact length, but it's a very short distance next to the Dollar General and we have mini warehouses. So if the proposal is an upgraded version of mini warehouses, now they're climate-controlled, still just concerned with that being the gateway to such a beautiful resource we have here in Upson County, being Spruill Bluff, a nice visual sign that everybody sees first and right next to it, some proposed, you know, climate-controlled or regular mini warehouses. That's what greets you with that beautiful sign. I feel like we're better than that here in Upson County. Again, I'm not anti-growth or quality development at all. I just, you know, how's it proposed that sure we could use that space for something a little more inviting, a little more quality, to bring a little more pride to this county. Would sure hope that we could stay away from being Griffin South, not trying to knock any neighbors or anything like that, but we've got plenty of storage units. We have plenty of Dollar Generals. There, there's no shortage of having access to those places. So again, I don't know how short, long, elaborate, or like thereof this was supposed to be. I just wanted to share that and of course I'll be back when there's another opportunity. Jeremy, what you looking for? How's this work?
Just wanted to hear your, hear your concerns, and we'll be notified when it's next week.
All right.
Okay? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next on the list is Marcia and Barry White.
Good evening, Vice Chair, also the Commissioners. I concur with my neighbor here, he said that very eloquently. I'm a little more nervous when it comes to speaking, so I made a few notes. My name is Marcia White and I have my husband, Mary White, here with me. We live at 3531 Crest Highway, Zoned AR. Our property is contiguous with 3116 Crest Highway, which is the property where the special exception is being requested to be built. We're here to speak out in opposition. We have several concerns and I'll get to the point and be as brief as I can. First of all, obviously, we were concerned about our property values going down with the type of construction that is being requested while our property taxes continue to go up. My husband and I are not native to Upson County. We came from Henry County and we spent a lot of time traveling throughout Georgia, throughout Alabama, being very selective about where we wanted to settle for our retirement. When we found the house on Crest Highway, I knew as soon as we pulled in the driveway, that was our home. And it is absolutely beautiful. It's an old farmhouse and you sit on the front porch and you look across the field and it's just stunning. And now we're being asked to have a mini warehouse built there where that is, that's going to be. And so we're very concerned about our property values with that type of construction being built, so that's one of the concerns. The other, it's my understanding that there are already 11 mini storage warehouses in Upson County and this is a request for a second, right here in a very short distance from one that was just built. So that's a concern if, you know, we don't need another mini warehouse right there in that, in that area. I want to speak to the wetlands, but I'll get back to that. On page 27, I'm not going to read, I was going to read that page, but I'm not. But if you look on page 27 in the comprehensive plan, it speaks to, it mentions Crest and Sunnyside as being rural communities and it says the unique sense of place within each rural community should be respected. Putting a second mini warehouse right there that, like my neighbor said, is the gateway to such a beautiful place, which is Spruill Bluff, is not inviting. It's not the message we want to send when we have visitors coming to our area. We, we need that area to, we need to focus on that area, but not with a mini warehouse. My husband and I were familiar with that area because we traveled every summer to Spruill Bluff to go kayaking and had no idea we were passing our house every single time. The area was beautiful, so we knew after we had traveled around that that's where we wanted to be. The other area thing I do want to mention is the wetland that's there. I have concerns that the property owner states that there is a certain amount that is buildable, but has the property owner done any testing or called out for any proper testing through, or just any proper testing to ensure that that portion is buildable, any type of soil testing? Because we want to ensure that any build, any construction is not going to disturb the wetlands in any way, whether it be the construction of the wetlands, that's probably not the right term, or any runoff into the wetlands and that it does not negatively impact our property nor our neighbor's property that is connected to that.
You got one minute.
And that is all I have to say. Thank you for hearing our concerns.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay. Next on the list, Sonya...
Dobek.
Dobek, okay.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Sonya Dobek and I'm a new resident at 140 Crescent Road. My mother lives here and I moved, sold my house in Sanoy to move here to help care for her as he, as she ages. She's invested everything she has to retire here and live in peace and quiet. I grew up in Clayton County, in Forest Heart. Later I lived in Allenwood, which was North Henry County. At the time, it was very rural. It's not anymore. I left there and moved to Peachtree City, where it was still very rural. Obviously, it's not anymore. Lived for a short time in Newman and then wound up back in Sanoy, where it was a little more rural. Of course, now it's exploding. So I can tell you that I have been through many communities who have started out small sleepy towns, perfect atmospheres, and who have gotten uncontrolled growth and has just exploded without the proper planning and foresight of what the future holds. So my concern is, and let me start by saying, I, I have talked to Mr. Matt Smith directly many times. I actually rent a storage unit in his facility beside Dollar General. It is less than 20% occupied. That facility is not even complete. I have pictures that I could show you. There is silk fencing that has not been removed, that is thrown down in the ditch, that is not cleaned up. I've had to ask him to please come clean out units and trash that's thrown about. I, I have the text messages, I could show you. I asked him about securing the gate, then he says it's secure. It's still not done. This was back in March. He told me in January it'd be done. This is the end of August, it's still not done. You know, I'm, I'm concerned that this passive income strategy that he has is all about getting in, throwing some concrete down and throwing up some buildings and collecting some money and not really thinking about how he's impacting the, the area around us. Yes, we need development there. We do. We don't even have a gas station that's relatively close. You know, I'm not saying build one on the corner, but I'm saying, let's think about what the community really needs there. You're going to have a lot of stormwater runoff. I work in construction as an electrician. You're going to have a lot of stormwater runoff from that concrete, tons of it. Has anybody really addressed that? Has anybody contacted the EPA to have them do that study? I, I mean, let's not put the cart before the horse, gentlemen, please. Help us develop that area, especially along Crest Highway where they've cleared and that's commercial. That is prime real estate to do something absolutely beautiful. People come into our community down Crest Highway, they see that sign of Spruill Bluff and then you're like wide open. You've got an enormous possibility, potential to make something beautiful there, to be a plus for the community, not just for some businessman who just wants to collect some more money and who can't even finish what he starts before he starts something else. Please help us. I, I mean, I'm asking, I know some of these things don't fall within y'all and, and I get that, but it's a concern that the same cycle's going to be repeated again and he's going to leave and then we're left with it. Please help us. Please. Give us something nice out there. That's what we deserve. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
What's the last name on the list? Since we have no way else, will we close the public hearing?
No, we're going to keep it open for next month.
Well, I want to ask, I guess I want to ask, do we want to do that and hear your, hear your, or you want to leave it open?
Let's leave it open to next month.
Okay. And...
Just need a motion to continue and...
Have a motion to continue next month. Okay. This will be brought back up next month when he's supposed to supply us with more of those informations and we'll take all of your thoughts and concerns into consideration.
Mr. Chairman, the next meeting is September 9th.
September the 9th, okay.
So we could re-attend September 9th?
Absolutely. Yep. Please, you know, please do, that's what, this is, this is your opportunity. That's what this is for, so you can, you know, please do and maybe we can take care of it.
Well, we're counting on you.
Thank you. I thank y'all. I appreciate you coming and voicing your concerns. That's what this is for.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay. Next item is 4B. It's text amendments for subdivision ordinance. And do we go, we go run these together or do those separately?
Mr. Chairman, I know that's kind of the awkward thing is we'll probably have these as two separate ordinances adopting the changes to each different ordinance. And obviously, we didn't have a sign-up sheet separating them, so however you'd like to take it, either one at a time or just both together, you could do it either way.
I'm, I'm going to say let's stack them both together and...
As a public hearing.
At the, as a public hearing, we will hear both of them together. Since we're taking both of them together, I only have one person that's signed up to speak and unless y'all have objections, I'll give him 10 minutes since he's doing, we're covering both. That's the only one that's covered to speak. So have a motion to open a public hearing?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Anamis, thank you.
Mr. Eddie Cochran?
Now, you said both, two of them are, are we talking about the zoning and then we're talking about the...
You got 10 minutes to talk about both and if, if you have any more than that, I would really recommend that you present anything else, because there's a lot.
Yeah.
There's, there's, there's a lot to absorb, a lot, a lot to cover. So my recommendations would be that you could, if you have further after that to present those things in writing to Mr. Doug and he will give us all copies of it, so we can take all of that into consideration, because we value your opinions and whatever.
All right. My name's Eddie Cochran. Own land on Waymanville Road. I work as engineer at Cooper Lighting. I'm against the zoning of the land where, where it pertains to giving a person two acres to build a house on. I think that giving a person two acres to build a house on is plenty enough land to build a nice house, a little shop, a little garden and to maintain the grass, because I cut a lot of grass and I, it can be taxed. So, and I think that if you do this zoning, it's going to, it's going to hurt people at Thomas. It's not going to help them. But if you want to, if I give two acres of land or to a friend or to a person to help them get a start, then that, I see that as a good thing. I don't see it as a bad thing. So I don't see where this, what y'all talking about, the amendments on that, is going to benefit the people of Thomas. The second part that we were discussing earlier about the building with the secondary building, I totally 100% agree with that, 100%. I think that's a great idea. Might do that myself. That's pretty much all I have to say.
We have nobody else signed up?
Now, if you want to close the public hearing and then you can hear from Lee Walton if you'd like to hear his presentation.
We have a recommendation to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. Okay. So then we'll hear the presentation. Okay.
Good evening, gentlemen. In June of this year, I was here with an overview presentation of the proposed changes to the zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations. At that time, it was more concept level and it was a discussion of the analysis and notions we had at the time. So since that time, we, Lee Walton, WSP project manager, Claire Patrick is joining tonight. We've worked with Doug and his staff to draft proposed specific text amendment language to the subdivision ordinance and zoning ordinance. And that has been provided to you for review. We had an open house opportunity here before this meeting tonight where we had a discussion with several citizens who showed up with questions and we've got a presentation out there. We have a survey or sort of response form for that, which is both physical and also online survey and that'll remain open to collect public input. And we will also, I believe Doug, be posting those posters on the county's website for public input as well. What we expect is to take the input that we're getting, some comments we received tonight, some more comments that we'll receive, work from some more analysis we've done, and produce a revised version of this, public input. Purpose is to hear comments and then respond to them. So what you have before you tonight, which you've reviewed, will be modified somewhat, but in principle, the areas that we're dealing with in these draft text amendments are what we'll proceed to the Board of Commissioners for their consideration. So in summary, we, first of all, are responding to the adopted policy of the comprehensive plan as we are proposing these text amendments, we, the staff. Comprehensive plan was adopted about this time last summer, maybe it was in July, and it described a vision and some modified way of looking at county land use policy. Specifically, it identified a distinction between active agriculture areas in the north and northeast part of the county, distinct from the forestry areas, timberland that's across the western, southern parts of the county, recognizing that there's a different reality to residential development in an active agriculture environment compared to residential development in a rural passive forested environment. So responding to that, we're proposing reduced, excuse me, proposing larger lot sizes as minimum requirements for new subdivision in the AR zoning. And then we're also providing some new options for zoning in rural development, a rural estate district, which would be a three-acre lot size zoning district. It's kind of an in-between. Right now, we don't have anything in between AR and R1. We go straight from agriculture to R1 residential. A lot of communities have this rural estate, rural residential district that's in-between, so that's what's proposed here. And then we propose a number of changes that apply to AR and R1 and R2 and so forth, specifically, as was mentioned, allowing or encouraging accessory dwelling units in addition to primary residences on properties, making that a little easier to do and code. And we're working with lot sizes and lot widths. We're proposing a lot width to depth ratio to try to result in more regular-sized lots. If you look at the parcel map of the county, you'll see some circumstances where we've got lots that are literally 100 feet wide and a mile deep, maybe not literally, but you know, figuratively that. And so, you know, a lot of counties that I'm familiar with have a width to depth ratio. There's always exceptions, you know, and that's what we're here for, is to work out the details when a land or topography doesn't work for that. Same sort of thing with flag lots, we're proposing some changes to the flag lot requirements to, really to require a bit more spacing out of flag lots along county roads. One of the things that we've encountered and that impacts the rural environment is repeated driveways close together on county roads as a result of flag lots next to new lots. So we've got some proposed standards that would require more spacing out of new driveways when flag lots are developed. And then within the subdivision regulations, to complement the rural preservation measures of larger minimum lot sizes in AR and of the RE district, rural estate district, we're adding to the subdivision regulations a conservation development option. So it's not a new zoning category, it's just an alternate approach to conventional subdivision approach. In a conventional subdivision approach, you have a piece of land and you subdivide all of it into lots for development, minus the roads that might be built to access that. In a conservation development approach, you take the entire piece of land, you designate an area for conservation, maybe it's because of environmental features or scenic or combination of, of community use, and you set that aside first and then you design your roads and lots around that. You end up with smaller lot sizes, but no increase in density. So if your allowance for your piece of property is X number of units per normal development, you'd still be allowed X number of units in a conservation approach. It's just those lots would be smaller, but the net density would be the same. And there'd be a measure in place, a conservation easement, to preserve the open space permanently. Open space could be used for farming or it could be preserve forests, could be a variety of things. So that's written up in the subdivision regulations. There's a few other minor tweaks that are proposed to the subdivision regulations as well. And in lieu of continuing to talk about this, I will see and be glad to answer any specific questions that you might have.
Okay. Does anybody have questions concerning this point?
I don't, no, this point.
Doug, do you have anything?
I, I would just, you know, some statements that we discussed earlier was, this is a lot of changes and a lot of these are going to have a lot of effect on a lot of people. And y'all have had it about three weeks now, but if you want more time, the goal of the county is to have this adopted before the end of the year. So if you feel it necessary to study this for another month until the next meeting, so you can digest all these changes, and as you heard, you're going to get revised changes, because we've had a staff meeting, you, you heard some comments today. If we get any written things, we'll at least share those comments with you. So there'll be even more changes to what you've already got and you've got pages and pages and pages. So you've got a choice if you just want to, you know, continue this and forward it to the, or not continue it and forward it to Board of Commissioners, you could do that tonight. Or you've got two choices, if you want to keep it for one more month and study this. We've already closed the public hearing, but you could reopen it now. Or technically, you have 45 days from the closing of the public hearing to give your report to the Board of Commissioners. Well, your next meeting's in basically 30 days. So in theory, you don't need to reopen the public hearing, you just don't give them your recommendation until after the September meeting and that's within the 45 days. So, Mr. Chairman, whatever you choose tonight, either to continue in one fashion or the other, or, or just to forward it to the Board of Commissioners for their consideration.
Do you have thoughts, recommendations?
Well, I'd like to have another month to flesh it out, a little bit more.
I agree. And I personally would like to, and that would give opportunity to the community, if somebody else has seen this, they can present their things in writing to you and that can be forwarded and so we can look at a, look, look at our vision and maybe considerations that have been brought up and thoughts and then we can see a better plan and send us that revised plan and then that gives us another month on the run. So do I have a recommendation to that, that we postpone?
That was my recommendation.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Anamis, thank you.
Thank you so much and we will address that. It's the September meeting. Thank you for your concerns, thank you for your comments and like I said, I would solicit if you do have, have other concerns and other thoughts to present those in writing to us.
Yes, sir. And, and when y'all have the county commissioner board meetings, I think you get a list of that, so you know, I'm seeing Thomas and it's getting, it's, it's in a beautiful spot for business now, a large corporation to come in here for technical jobs. I'm just seeing that because of the deal, the dredging down there and all the shipment to Kia. There was a friend of mine at Tennessee, they just opened a huge warehouse up there and they run it with Roblox. I mean, they have a lot of fuel, a lot of people, something like that.
Thanks, sir. The commission meetings are on our website, dates and...
They're even posted on the...
They're posted outside. They're posted outside too, so they're easy, readily available. So that finishes that. Number five is other business, upcoming vision, it's two classes.
Mr. Chairman, in your package, you receive the upcoming schedules. Vice Chairman and I are scheduled for the 104 class. We're going to go to that. You'll see later on the list there of classes, there's a small line. I think on the second page, it lists the upcoming classes. For instance, I think the 101 might be, what, November or October?
Then I like to find for that.
All right. So you're good for that one?
Yes, sir.
And I know Commissioner Pitts, you've already been through one and two anyway. And Mr. Hilton, if you decide that you want, have you been through the one and two? I don't remember.
You've been through both of those?
Yeah.
All right. Well, then if you wanted to go to the 104, that would still be available.
I've done one and two.
Right. So, all right. So there are still opportunities for the end of the year for these classes to be taken. We'll sign you up for the 101 class. Okay, that's it.
Number six, planning, commission issues and announcements. Does anybody have anything?
I have none.
Okay? Okay. Next, secretary's issues and announcements.
I try to keep you up to date on the ordinances that you've passed through to the Board of Commissioners. So tomorrow night, the RV ordinance that you passed through, a very short one, prohibiting new ones and limiting or eliminating expansion of RFE parks. So it'll be on tomorrow night's agenda.
Okay? We have nothing else to add?
If I may.
Sure.
If neither of the chairpersons watching, hope you're feeling good. I'm Doug.
Thank you. We have nothing else to have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion again.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you. 6月12日
Hang on to your notes from the... And thank y'all.
Y'all have a good night.
Thank you.